Call the board to the regular Board of Education meeting of February 13th, 2018.
Pledge of诫 to the fire of the United States of America and to the requirement of righteous fairness for our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or be requested to be scheduled on the agenda of future meetings. Administration.
Just a couple of quick announcements I'll pass around. Mr. Loach, Mr. Clare and I had the opportunity a few, a couple of weeks ago to visit Tecumseh area schools and they have a fairly innovative, particularly we used to visit their seventh grade building in terms of some of the, their approach to student learning. So I'll pass around some documentation on that. You get a sense of what's going on there. Also, to honor the, at the Michigan Music Conference, 13th Annual the Celine High School Chamber Choir and Ms. Price were honored and had an opportunity to present and sing at this event. I'll pass around the program for, you know, the great opportunity for our students and for our faculty to be recognized. Other than that, I'd just like to publicly thank our maintenance staff and our transportation staff. We're in the thick of winter and they're doing an excellent job of making sure that our facilities are in great shape and that our suits are transported to and from school safely. So, great work.
So, at the high school, we're about halfway through second try with finals in spring sports, starting second week of March. And then, just one other thing, we decided we're gonna have senior gowns for our two class advisors at the high school with all the seniors signing them. And then, they can either decide to wear them at graduation or just keep them as a memory alone.
Hey, since this is election year, there are two board seats up this year. Trusty Cuomo and Trusty Del Pei, who is absent tonight. June, no, July 24th is the last day to register. If you're interested, and we will be holding, the board will be holding an information center on how to run for the board sometime in the next couple of months, for anyone interested.
I'd like to thank the board for shipping me off to Washington for a few days. That was for the National School Board Association Advocacy Day on the Hill. It was, it was a great experience. About 1,200 or so people who were all elected school board officials weren't afraid to talk. You could sit at any table and they would just welcome you in. We, we met Senators Stabenow and Peters. I did not get to Tim Walberg, but I met his legislative assistant. We, we plied him with all the things we wanted to cover. There were nine big issues. We really just wanted to hit the three big ones with him. The career technical education, Title II funding, which is very, very important for some districts for professional development. And I forget what the other one was, but it was really important. I had them, obviously I went in with a huge pile of information and all the briefing notes for two days beforehand before we had a chance to talk. And I have some, I should have just looked at the talking points that I was given by the National School Boards. So it was great. I really appreciated the, your, that supported me. Ann Arbor sent five school board members. So next year, we'll, we'll double what we sent, right?
I also wanted to acknowledge last, uh, last night, this weekend was the snow blast and it was very, it was very well attended. Again, it, they made more money than they did last year, which was totally awesome. And I cannot remember the dollar amount, but it was a lot. It was a very successful event and, you know, does a lot for the schools. So we appreciate all the community that came out to make that a success.
I recommend a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved?
Support.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, schedule reports. Eagle Scout Hennifield project.
All right. I'd like to call Will Minnet to the, this, Will has an Eagle Scout project related to Hennifield. He has a presentation to talk a little bit about what that will look like. So, Will, take it away.
Thank you Superintendent Grayden, Dr. Loach, President Austin, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen for hearing this proposal today. I would first off like to thank Mr. David Rhodes for helping me along with this project and with this proposal. My name is Will Minnet. I'm a temporary student at Celine High School. I'm a life scout. I'm currently working on my Eagle project. This Eagle project would entail building a privacy screening fence at Hennifield, saying the beautification of Hennifield for future use. The vision for this project would be to install this privacy fence that encloses a concrete slab on the northwest side of Hennifield. The slab would enclose three sides completely and a fourth side would have two half walls with everything between fences. Fence would be constructed from pre-built privacy panel, pri- yeah, privacy fan panel fencing and fence post. This slide indicates where the slab that would be enclosed would be, so if fence would be, and this second photo kinda shows how fence would look on this slab. This is a blueprint for the design which you should have in front of you. All the measurements are labeled. The drawing is not to scale, so that's why the, all dimensions are labeled. Each black square represents a fence post that will be either sunk into the ground or bolted to the concrete. And each line represents a pre-made fencing panel. Again, for the construction, the fence will be made of, pre-made eight-foot-long fencing panels made of treated wood. The fence post will be also treated wood and would plant in 42 inches deep below the front line and seated in concrete for extra stability. And any fence post that must be anchored to the concrete will be, will be anchored with a concrete post anchor foot. The fence will also have some aesthetic decorations to aid in the beautification project. They'll have a shallow trench of p-gravel to aid in drainage of the, drainage around the fence. The drainage trench will also have about seven, several, seven hardy bushes planted for drainage coverage. And the bushes will be dwarf box from shrubs. These are, this is a material list. We need 10 eight-foot-long treated, fenced, treated wood fencing panels, 13 fence posts, four post belt feet to connect to the concrete, numerous bags of p-gravel, about seven dwarf boxwood bushes, five pound, five eighty-pound bags of concrete powder, and screws and concrete bolts. That's it. These are some of the, this is an example of some of the materials used. There would be the fencing panels, the concrete to post connectors, and the shrubs. Now, the purpose of, the main purpose of this project is to conceal two portable toilets for, to conceal them from the road and from people at the park. So, this is what the floor picture would look like. Then... This is a general pricing list of all the, all the materials needed in the construction. So, all the fence posts, the post teeth, concrete powder, wood screws, concrete bolts, and aesthetic decorations would come out to about $1,000 as of three days ago. Any tools could be donated or supplied. There would be, drills would be needed with filaments and screw covers, concrete drill bits, electric shawls, shovels, buckets. Any special, any special permissions would be from the Celine Area School Board, the City of Celine Council, and the Friends of Hennifield Commission. Also, we would need to call, call before you dig, you can't afford digging the fence posts. Any manpower could be filled with Boy Scout volunteers, parent volunteers, and volunteers from around the community. Any funds for the materials can be gathered from troop fundraising, like car washes, pop off drives, and Boy Scout popcorn sales, personal donations from people around the community, vendor donations from discounts, and material donations, and any sponsors. I believe that's it. Do any of you have any questions?
What's your timeline on the project, Will?
Timeline, un negated, completed. The goals have, the goals have approved by the end of March. And to have it started and completed within like, the last two weeks of June.
Great. Great project.
Good.
Yeah. Good service. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Next will be the coding presentation.
All right. I'd like to welcome Mary Ledford, a secondary teacher from Woodland Meadows, along with some special friends to help. As you know, we hear a fair amount about the need to teach coding in our schools. And so, many people, when we think about that, can think about what we're doing at the high school level relative to teaching code. But it's important to understand that we have activities at various grade levels, including secondary. Ms. Ledford and her class are leaders in this area.
So, thank you so much for inviting us to speak tonight and coding. I'm Mary Ledford. I am a second grade teacher at Woodland Meadows. And these are my superstars. This is Jackson and this is Huntley, Landon, Fiona, and Lizzie. Lizzie, come on over a little bit this way. And we're gonna be talking a little bit about coding and in the elementary classroom. Wait just a second until we get everything all situated.
Here with us one moment.
Will, be sure you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and just push them for discounts. They'll give them to you. Trust me.
Paul's Center.
My kids usually work there. They get discounts for all kinds of reasons, so.
Thank you very much.
I'm getting right to the paragraph. Actually, just click to the next slide. Thank you. So what is computer coding? Coding is a language that we use to create softwares and apps and websites. And we have two different types of computer coding. We have the unplugged activities, which is the foundation. So coding is algorithms that I want my students to know before we even get to the plugged devices. We look at directions, we look at, we look at giving directions, understanding directions, and movement it would take to get from one place to another. So we're really looking at that spatial relationship. Once they have a firm foundation of that, we go into the plugged activities. So you can use a laptop, a smartphone, a desktop, an iPad. And it looks different with every type of app that we go to or every type of website. This is called code.org. And there's three areas that are similar no matter where you go. So we have a workspace right here, which is where we do all of our coding. This is a menu area. And in that menu area, we can find all sorts of things that we want our avatar to move. It's a click and drag. And we stack these blocks on top of one another. And then, when we're ready to run our program to see if we've done it well, we hit the run button. And one of the things that we like about computer coding is that we can see instantaneously if we've done the right coding, if we've written the right directions. If we haven't, then we can go back and hit the reset button and try again. So why are we coding? So for me, I look at all of the standards that I need to do in a second grade classroom. And I think of the language arts, the math, the social studies. And I wanna bring them all together. So coding kind of helps me do that. And I'll give you an example of how I bring that into language arts in the reading and writing workshop. The strategic framework is about integrating technology and making those future leaders. And we developed some spatial awareness. We've got some soft skills going on. We're working on perseverance and flexibility. And so how do we embed coding into the curriculum? So for me, I'm looking at my comprehension strategies that I'm teaching while I'm teaching reading. And these are just a few of them, summarizing and retelling. And it's, they're not strong when they come into second grade. So, we know that coding is a language. And language acquisition at its best is about four years old to almost 10 years old, depending on the study that you're reading. And so we wanna bring in that second language to them. So these are the skills that I'm teaching. But then, when I take it to the coding, they kind of have a connection between the book that they have in front of them and the coding skills. Michelle's gonna hit a little video. And this is just a 10-second video. And I want you to notice the activity that's happening. So what that was, is I asked a student to tell me about his favorite part of the book. So he wrote code to show me that there was a dodgeball game going on. So you saw the ball moving across. And then every time a player got hit, he disappeared. So that is one way that we bring it into reading workshop. Tell me the summary of the story. And Jackson's done a great job of doing the levels of beginning, middle, and end, and bringing in all of the parts of the story. And then I can visually see what he understands, his comprehension level of the story. And so writing workshop, when they're just beginning, while I love these little darlings, sometimes they don't have a strong grasp of sentence structure. So coding kind of helps us with that. And you can see here that this is the workspace on Scratch Junior. And when they think of sentences, what do we start with? Start with a, start with a capital N with a period. Right. So they have that. They're beginning to understand. Same thing with coding. It's a language. We start with a flag. That's our, our starting point. We need a noun, which would be our sprite or in our avatar. We need a verb in there, which is our action. And how is it coming all to be? And then we need something at the end. So they understand sentence structure. And then, we can transfer it to coding or vice versa. If they're struggling with like, I don't have a noun here, or I don't have a verb, we can go back to what did we do on our coding? So I can flip it back and forth. So beyond the curriculum, at Woodland Meadows, we were able to host Hour of Code. And that takes place across the globe in the first week in December. And we just asked every classroom to try one hour of coding. Well, it looks a little different at the elementary. We do about a half hour. And these superstars helped me and a couple other classrooms go into other classrooms and teach some of the kindergartners and the third graders how to code. And so they were true leaders throughout the month of December. We were always getting requests, come in and show us how to code. Come in and show us how to code. And we had a great time. And so that went all across Woodland Meadows. We did have an after-school coding club. And I did that through community ed. And there was a waiting list. So that's kind of how popular it's getting. So what you see here is we had a top secret assignment, didn't we? And do you see some of the spies here tonight? So we had some secret agents come and visit us. And we're giving you a sneak peek of what coding would look like beyond the curriculum. Together, we had assignments from these secret agents that randomly showed up in our room. Isn't that, that went down?
Yeah.
Randomly showed up in our room with these top secret assignments. And so we, we made several movies about the history of Celine. We're not gonna unveil too much because we wanna come back in the spring when it's up and running. And we would love for you to find out about our Celine history app. But we do have a high school student who's been working with us. And Troy's been amazing in kind of supporting us through the way of coding at a, at a deeper level. All right. So what teacher would just let you sit? This is an interactive presentation. And so my superstars are going to pass out iPads to all the board members. We also have QR codes. If you would like to follow along, if you have a smartphone, if you have an iPad, if you have a laptop, we have the Bitly link here. We would like you to try just coding a couple of lines. So this is Bitly and it's code SW for Star Wars. If you have a smartphone, you're welcome to scan it. To the people that have iPads, okay? I don't, I guess. Thank you. All right. I want you to at least try a couple lines of code. We are gonna keep you, we know this is a tight, tight schedule for all of us. But they are ready to help anyone who has a question. Okay. So now we're gonna like walk around and see if anyone needs some help, okay?
Oh, I see. So this is our...
Is there an easy, a polar, polar aggression?
Thank you again. Thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight.
Next report will be the special education report.
And unfortunately, it's not interactive or telling keeps young children.
Then we're done.
All right, here we go. So this is special education programs for Celine area schools, February 2008. Start with some basic demographic information. We have 708 students that have IEPs. We provide services ages three to 26. We have full services in every building that includes physical therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, resource room, social work. We also have peer programming grades three, or age three to 26. So that can be our connecting program at the high school. That can be our pals, our stars. And we are doing some peer programming with our preschool now that we're all in one location. This is our disability profile. Our trends tend to be on with the county and the state. Our largest grouping is students that have a specific learning disability, followed by otherwise health impaired and students that have autism. Here is some trend data for the last five years. Again, this is pretty on course with the state and the surrounding counties.
What's the one going down the road?
That is speech and language. That big dip between 2014 and now is when there was the big push from the state to, if students had articulation only, to move them off of IEPs. And then the two that are, have pretty significant upticks are otherwise health impairment and autism spectrum disorder. Again, those are common trends that we see in the state and the county. Department updates. The column on the left was goals from last winter, which involved increasing project-based learning, growing peer-to-peer models, developing systematic emotional wellbeing and support for students and parents, increasing a variety and location of job sites, increasing transition opportunities in our community. For 2018, we were able to provide a lot more professional development and cohesion between our special ed staff and our general education staff, K5, around Project Lead the Way, project-based learning. We have a pretty large group from Woodland Meadows Heritage and the middle school go out to New York for the Lucy Hawkins Reading and Write Teachers College. We have developed a connecting club at the high school that's been student-led. It is for social activities outside of the school day. That's been a very big success. Social thinking has been rolled out, K26, zero 26. That is the curriculum developed by Michelle Garcia-Winters that has to do with behavior as a form of communication. How do we support students not only communicating positively, but also behaving positively. We did connect with Brecken for an apartment site. They don't have an apartment available for us to actually run as our own apartment to practice cleaning and life skills for our age 26. But when one opens up, they've said we can come and, we trade. We'll, we'll maintain a form and we get to have our kids experience what an apartment looks like. And we were able to partner with ISD to build out some more programs for individuals that are in our young adult program. And we have significantly increased our students that are enrolled with MRS to receive transition services from the high school post-secondary. That was a lot of information I threw at you really quick. Any specific questions? Department updates continued. This year, we were able to develop a new program at the middle school to specifically support students that had sensory and behavior needs. We contracted with Novel Responses, that are board-certified behavior analysis, analysis, to support students in Celine that have chronic and acute behavior challenges, as well as provide resources to our parents. We are transforming the young adult calendar to go to a Monday through Friday calendar, beginning with the 2008 school year. We will still offer summer programming. It'll just follow the model of Hornet Camp. So they actually are getting some increased programming. And we did begin the transition of our zero to three population to the ISD for services. Just some pictures. So I guess I do have some cute children with me just in the form of photos. This is our fire brick business that has started with our life skills programs for the middle school, high school, and young adults. This was a grant, that was a partnership grant with the foundation. And I cannot remember the business right now. Anyways, they were able to buy shredders and brick molds. So they are making fire bricks and selling them. And it's taken off. They're pretty successful with it right now. A parent helped us write the grant for that. We have some complex attributes in action here. We have some of our students using QR codes to do some flipped lessons. We have some of our students using QR codes to do some flipped lessons at the elementary level. And then some of our students doing project-based learning for our algebra foundation class at the high school. And this is our students entering funds raised from the polar plunge for the connecting club. They have really taken the lead on that. They are pretty much telling Patricia Fair and Kim Mun what they envision for the project and making it come to life themselves. So it's been a pretty big success, not only for the student leaders, but for the students that are benefiting from the peer-to-peer interaction. Moving forward, we're going to work as a department to continue to support co-teaching and the blended learning models at the Celine High School. We're really looking to expand social thinking to include all interested general education partners, continue the professional development to really support our evolution of inclusion here in Celine, and continue to expand on the building opportunities we have here in Liberty, especially with the blending of all the programs, the courtyard development. And that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah?
If we wanted to purchase a fire brick, how do we go about that?
So that I can send you the link. The link is on my special education website under the pull-down tab under departments. And I believe it went out in Steve's News and Notes as well. It's through RevTrack. And they burn really well. They're not a starter. They burn like a piece of wood.
Did the modifications we made to Heritage from over last year work out? I mean, things.
So the space issue?
The space issue.
Yes, and it's a work in progress, a student needs development. And I think one of the things that's been helpful is as Laura and I have gotten to know all of the staff and the staff needs, we've been able to really utilize the space in a different way. You know, taking into account the special schedule that's so unique at Heritage. There's a lot of spaces that aren't being used. The population that needed a little bit of a bigger space, we were able to make that happen. Rex and his team were able to help rework space that was already over there.
Thank you, Ma.
Yeah?
Last report is the goal number four presentation.
Let's hope the tech works for this one.
Thanks for having us. We are goal group four. We're a combination of the district strategic framework goal core, which is finance, and the digital ecosystem group from the modern teacher needs. We also have a cool nickname, but we'll save that story for the end. Our main focus is the combination of fiscal solvency while teaching, taking student-led future-focused work to scale.
Our roles are to develop a digital ecosystem plan for all areas of the district, create infographic to highlight the critical elements of the digital ecosystem that support the teaching and learning process, and to determine what the ideal classroom looks like in different grades, grade ranges.
So our infographic that we're looking, this is just a draft, but we're looking to create one for the district that talks about the collaboration and innovation and access that staff, parents, instructors, and students all have. And then each of those would break into a separate one. And for instance, this is the instruction. So there's a section on what we assess, on how we design, and then voice and choice, community of learning, et cetera. So the compass is in here as well. But this would include links and small icons of each of the apps and programs that we use, that we found through our research is used the most in each of the areas.
So like Ms. Dager mentioned, our digital ecosystem is going to be a hub to kind of pull together all our different resources in one place. It's really kind of cool. It's not just putting links there, but it'll allow us to have single sign-on. So a resource that everyone uses every day like Power School. It won't only be a link there, but it'll sign you in too. So once you get into the system, you have all the resources and you're one click away from using it. We plan on rolling this out to the admin staff at the next meeting next month, as well as students shortly after that.
Finding the ideal learning spaces. So over the past three years, we've been working to improve the positive learning environment, or the third teacher, which is the classroom. Learning spaces that are clean and safe. We've improved the quality of the air, the temperature controls, increased light levels, LED, natural light, and improved acoustics in the classroom. I have visited numerous districts and quality furniture manufacturers and had the pleasure to work with other classroom and other building administrators to develop prototype classrooms with furniture for K-3, 4, 5, middle school and high school students. Flexible student, flexible furniture that provide environments that meet the different needs and learning styles of each student, student groups, or subjects. Collaboration stations or watering holes, large group presentation areas or campfires, as well as quiet retreat spaces or caves. We strategically placed this furniture in each building with teachers who are working in the student-led, future-focused strategic framework. No more desks arranged in nice negroes, no more teachers teaching from the front of the room or behind the desk. Throughout the year, administration and staff have observed this prototype classroom and soon they will, we will offer it officially to all teachers and students in the K-3. We'll do this with the use of Power School Learning Course called SAS Demo Days, where the teacher can take a class and it's a...
Microcondential.
Microcondential. And there'll be helpful tools, deep front your classroom, understanding, campfires, caves, and watering holes. And they'll answer, the student and the staff will answer the question, how can learning space design positively impact classroom learning, the culture of the classroom, and/or building the health and wellness of the students, and support the SAS compass? We will be collecting the positive and negative feedback and the goal will be to have all the furniture selected by the end of the school year so we can finalize the details in the fall and place the order and be ready for installation in the summer of 2019.
In regards to the devices that we have in our buildings, our, we have one-to-one iPads in the K-2 classrooms. There's a mix of Chromebook and iPads in 3 through 5. Then we have some half cart devices in the middle school. The high school is going to be addressed this summer. We're moving forward with that. So our infrastructure, in the last 18 months, we have replaced all components of the network and installed a brand-new Wi-Fi system and upgraded the speed of the internet connection. And all of this is also helping move toward our blended learning that we're looking to implement at the high school as well.
So you might ask, how do we bring the digital ecosystem to scale? Since the community has supported the district by passing both the bond issue and the sinking fund issue, we have the ability to match the funding source to the need. We have also started setting aside funds in a capital projects fund and these will all help protect the fund balance in our general fund. For short-term needs such as instructional technology, we can access sinking fund and capital projects fund before touching our general fund. For long-term needs such as FF and E with our long-life or classroom innovations, we can access the bond sinking or capital projects funds before touching our general fund. We're very fortunate to be in this position. Just a couple of years ago, we did not have the ability to match the funding source to the need.
Big thanks to Larry for jumping in for Ms. Warner, who's not feeling good tonight. I know the financial slide is not an easy one. So what are our next steps? One of our next steps is just to continue our monthly meetings to bring the future-led, student-led, future-focused work to scale. We also want to finalize the digital ecosystem and begin to roll it out to staff and the community.
Develop the ideal or standard learning space for K-3, 4 through 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. And then earmark those monies to grow the district's need for technology and learning space improvements.
We will be collaborating with the goal group one to integrate the ideal learning space with instruction for blended learning.
Discuss ways to measure the effectiveness of Celine area schools' learning spaces and spur innovation and collaboration.
All right, any questions for us? Mr. Rex, I got a quick question. I have, I heard caves and watering holes. I forgot what the third one was.
Campfires.
Campfire, fire pit. And that's, what are we surrounding then? I kind of missed that one.
So campfire would be how an expert gives instruction to a group of people.
Oh, okay.
Figurative.
Hope I got that, yeah.
Just want to make sure we're clear.
Whole group instruction.
For the restroom and the waterfall. I mean, I get that.
No real fires in the building.
Mental, I'll write that down. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it rain.
Oh, yes, our nickname is Make It Rain. We had a meeting this summer and we had to come up with a creative nickname and so it was Make It Rain. We actually wanted Ms. Warner to deliver that line. Let's throw some fake money out for us, but.
But she does not make it rain.
Okay, can I have a recommended motion to approve the bid for the replacement of turf at Celine High School as follows. Site work, TPK, Allison Park, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $429,249 in synthetic turf, AstroTurf Corporation, Dalton, Georgia, in the amount of $670,083 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
So, support?
Just in, again, in just steps, just synthetic turf replacement, again, this is for both fields, both the stadium field and what we call the auxiliary or track field. Installed in 2004. We've gotten significant use out of those fields. Perform very well for us. The reality is that they are no longer safe enough for us to continue on. We would have liked to replace them last year. We held off a year and are able to get one more season out of them and plan to replace them this year. Just clearly, I know in Austin's lemons this year from Foresight, talk a little bit about the project and share a little bit more.
Good evening. We had a very active bidding period. We had seven bidders for the synthetic turf. We had four on the site work, all very competitive. At the end of the day, the project came in slightly under budget. We have good confidence in all of the contractors that are experienced. We look forward to them moving in at the appointed hour and getting to work on this project right away. If there's any questions about, you know, some of the scope items, we did get a very competitive number from the site contractor, TPK. With this, we had various alternates included and we've elected to, you know, recommend those to you. One of the larger ones was the installation of a pad system underneath the carpet. This will provide additional safety for the student athletes that are using us. You can't read an article these days without hearing about concussions. This will help offset some of that.
What's the expected life expectancy of the new ones now?
They're still about 10 years, 10 to 12 years.
And we have 14 out of course one.
Yeah, yeah, but the technology's gotten better, the yarns are better, infills are better.
Safer, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, safer, better. The wearability of them, you know, they perform much better.
And it's one of those things, we see our field a lot, having spent some time on it. Because if you go to facilities that were built probably in the last five or six years, the difference between the material you walk in those fields, the compression of the field, as well as the condition of the turf, the tough, it's night and day. I mean, it's truly different. And then when you look at the seaming systems, that, I think that's another area from a technology standpoint or from a procedure standpoint that has advanced significantly. We had over 400 issues that need to be addressed when our fields were maintained earlier this year from the contractor. So now we do have maintenance contracts that come along with.
You have all your warranty. It used to be that when logos were installed on the fields, you had the turf installer using a grid system in the parking lot to create it and then he would bring it out. Technology's gotten better, so that down in Dalton, Georgia, we give them a CAD file and they program it in. So they have various needles with the different yarn colors that they need and it gets stitched up to the panels now as opposed to individual pieces. So there were a lot of clients that would withhold doing something like this for fear that in time the glues or however they were held together would give way. And somehow it's a much better way to go about this.
So will they do that with all the yard lines and all the various things, are we going to still mark those?
A lot of the yard lines are actually tufted into the carpet holes, you know, before they're brought out here. You still have some items that are inlay, like your numbers and your letters inside the end zones. So those will be cut out and attached the same way.
So this pad now is, are we still going to have the little speckles of?
Yes.
Beeduck rubber tires or whatever.
They say in chrome rubber mix.
We did take a number on a alternative infill, but it was, it was very expensive.
The pad is actually good for two lifetime, two fields.
They'll start right after graduation?
Yes.
So we're just disposing of the old field, correct?
Yeah, there's been some discussions, does it have value and does the football club want some? Mr. Tyson's talked about wanting some for various areas. It does not have significant value, it literally is. And ultimately, we also need to get it out of there as quickly as possible.
So pass out a night to everyone at graduation and take a square and all say cost for it?
Is there a reuse for the granules that are in there now that they could be used for playgrounds or other ways? Or what do they do with that?
We'd kind of leave that up to the contractor. There are programs out there, they're kind of costly to recycle those. And one contractor I know who was advocating that we do this, he had a connection over to China, but China's kind of closed their door to a lot of the recycling efforts these days. So there is a place down in Pennsylvania that will take the infill and they have to separate the sand from the rubber. And then you, they will reuse that at certain times, but our specifications require that the contractor bring in new material. Even though the tires are recycled, they're not coming from somebody else's field.
The response, one of the contractors' response to that was they do get brittle. They do, the old material does get brittle. You recommend it to us. We can do some research on that, figure out exactly what we can and can't do with that material.
The parents in the last decade would argue that most of the materials in their laundry rooms. I would argue that it's already being recycled, the vacuums across Celine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Your motion carries 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Recommended motion to approve the purchase of four 2018 International 77 passenger buses from Capital City Bus in the amount of $393,508 passed submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
Slow move.
Support?
This continues our phasing relative to the bond in terms of our additional purchases so that we can kind of rework our monthly. Just Claire, you have any comments on this purchase?
This will be, like I said, this is, you know, this is a 10-year plan to replace the fleet for 40 buses in 10 years. This will be the, what, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th bus bought. We've had great success with the first eight. We buy into the Michigan School Business Officials Bus Cooperative Purchasing Plan. It's been, we may, in the last three years, so this last two years, our fleet has gone from the average of 14.6 years old to 9.2 years old. We've retired 21 1999 or older buses in the last two years. And that's new, mixing in new and used. We still buying four to six new used buses each year, but we've really improved the quality of our fleet. And we keep moving in the right direction.
One of the things in our most recent bus inspection, one of the things that is happening from a rust standpoint, the underbody, we travel, as you know, a lot of dirt roads, so we have some underbody rusting. of dirt roads, and so we have some underbody rusting, and the fix now that the state police want it is, is cost prohibitive, and so the imperative nature of our continued purchases is, is more critical. We simply don't have the funds to be able to, to fix the buses that we have now when it gets to a rust issue. We can fix some of the other mechanical issues associated with them as they get older, but it's just not cost-effective for us to try and rebody the undercarriage of a bus.
Are we seeing any, like, reduction in our repair costs?
Yes, yes. We have an increased little cost of depth fluid for the new buses, but yes, we are seeing a reduced spend in, in tires, tires, in repair material, yes. I don't know what that dollar is, but...
They are more fuel efficient, right?
Graps are getting about nine, eight to nine miles per gallon with the diesels compared to what we get in the past is about four to six miles per gallon.
You had some conversation with the Environmental Commission about a retrofitting grant with all these new buses. Do we still have any buses that need any, are we desperate to get a cut in, a discount in?
Majority of our buses are 2006 or older, so a 2010 to 2011 bus would be probably worth it at this point, but we really don't, we don't have that, that age. Our last new bus was 2009, I believe, before we started buying three years ago, or two years ago.
So are we going to, to apply for that grant again?
Yes, yes. And then the Volkswagen money, we still have to determine how that's all going to play out too, because we can apply for some of that as we replace older diesel fleet buses.
Is seventy-seven the normal size, and do we ever put that many people in a bus? Tell me no, just say no.
No, we do not. But some people seem to think we do. But on the average, fifty-four students on average ride school bus. That's the international average. We did a count last week. We'll still have to look at that to see what our average ridership was. Some of our subdivisions are growing faster than other subdivisions. So, but no, we do not, seventy-seven is the max on a early release day, on a half day, or on a snow cancellation activity day, you might see ridership in the seventies. In the K three, K five buildings, that's easily managed. At the high school, it's difficult. We still, you know, we still are safe. Nobody sits on the floor. Everybody has a seat.
I think it's fair, fair to remember, the issue with riding with passengers and buses has more to do with the availability of drivers than it does the availability of buses. So I wish we could buy four drivers the way we buy four buses.
Yes.
You on the record with that?
Well, not like buy four drivers. Find four drivers, the way we can find four new buses.
They don't, they don't come with buses?
No, unfortunately, no. That's really, it's, it's a labor issue, and we appreciate all the ones we do have.
We're actually saying the average age of our fleet is now roughly...
Nine point two years old.
Nine point two. What's the average? Any idea what the average is around the state?
We're still, in Washtenaw County, I know we're still low. We're still at the bottom in Washtenaw County.
In terms of age, our, the age of our fleet?
Yes, as far as the age of our fleet. National, in the state of Michigan, I don't know the answer to that.
No, but that's good.
We're coming up.
How many used are we, we're still buying four or five?
Last year, we bought six. Two from Chelsea, three, four from Chelsea, and then on the west side of the state.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six zero.
Have a recommended motion to approve the purchase of two hundred and forty Hewlett-Packard Chromebooks and sixteen Chromebook carts from Intecom TSG Southfield, Michigan, in the amount of $59,440.10 and thirty-two iPad Wi-Fi thirty-two gig, gig byte from Apple in the amount of $9,568 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
So moved.
Support.
All right, this purchase is largely relative to the Slane Middle School, looking to, we're really trying to redistribute some of our technology devices and kind of come to a one-to-two type of format where we have access to fifteen devices per classroom. Mr. Weston, do you want to touch base on that?
Yeah, just like Mr. Gray said, we basically identified all the teachers that have no devices at all, and we want to put a half-class set in each one, and so this will allow us to do that. And then there's also one aging iPad cart at the middle school. We've noticed it's not even getting that much use anymore, it's so old, so we would like to replace that, so get it up to snuff and get it used more.
These are our dollars that are in the original Facebook bond that we're designing for technology.
So is there a Chromebook versus iPad? Is, I mean, they're similar in nature and they last longer?
They're similar in nature. Mr. Lott could tell you, we, we kind of do it based on the need at the school, the curricular need, and so we find at the middle school that, that keyboard makes all the difference. First of all, it's a lower-cost device, but once you get into writing without a keyboard, you know, the little kids get away with it, but once you're really concentrating on writing, you really want a keyboard, and a Chromebook allows us to do that. So we do have the one cart so that they can do apps and creative creation like that and Chromebooks in most of the classrooms.
All right, to work on it, the HP Chromebook that I buy is a nice, I think it's a really nice machine in terms of its capabilities. Looking at our RMC pricing on this, it's one sixty-three a unit if you were to buy the same unit on Amazon's two twenty-plus, so I think we're getting pretty good prices for one sixty-three for a device that, well, you know, is durable and, and has, you know, fairly strong capabilities in terms of memory and speed, it's, it's a good price. That, that has been a game changer, and that's why Chromebooks really have started dominating education, in addition to the fact they're from the keyboard.
Is there five to seven-year lifecycle about?
Chromebooks, they're recommended three to four. We get five to six out of them just because we've tried to be a little more conservative. The last district, Huntley, that we went to, that's one-on-one Chromebooks, they do three years on the dot, but we also threw a lot more money than we do. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Recommended motion to approve the purchase of twenty-five HDMI-capable projectors from Intecom TSG Southfield, Michigan, in the amount of $10,520.50. And approval of, approve the quote for HDMI wiring from Challenger Jackson, Michigan, in the amount of $12,342.12 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
So moved.
Support.
Um, this is twenty-five projectors, ugly, but moving, kind of moving to the new generation of HDMI, and so it requires not only the new projector, but also the new wiring associated with it. You notice the wiring is almost the same or more cost than the projectors themselves, but this is the level of technology that we want to have in all of our classrooms over time.
So we've completed that work in the K five buildings, and we'd like to bring back to the middle school and then expect to hear from us for the high school this summer.
Can the purchase, do you still have to purchase extra lamps for the inevitable day when they burn out? Is that part of this budget?
That is not part of the budget. That's part of our repair budget, but we did buy handful, that's why we're trying to buy them in bulk and get the most like models, because then that's the less amount of lamps that we have to keep on hand. But yeah, that's the idea, is to scale not only the wiring, but the projectors and make them the same so that the repair cost is down.
Are the lamps lasting longer than they used to on the, the projectors?
They last longer. The only issue is really, you know, some of the variables you can't really, like, keeping them clean, they're going to last longer. So Rex and his team does a good job, so I have noticed the less breakage due to the dust and that kind of thing. And then they are a little bit brighter than they used to, so then they have a little bit longer life.
Once a year, do a air spruce or something?
Uh, yeah, we try to do once a year air, and then actually vacuum's better, so we, in the summer, we try to vacuum on, because we find that when you use the canned air, it's good in a pinch, but that kind of just takes the dust and spreads it out, and then it makes its way back to the projector, so we try to use a vacuum, but same idea. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six zero.
Have a recommended motion to approve the recommendation to vote for one of the three, Michael Murphy, Jack Thamesley, or Dale Winder to run for the MASB Board of Directors of Regions from Region Seven. I have a motion for Dale Winder.
Second?
Second? Discussion?
He, he seems to have the most background, deepest background with the boards and...
Current.
I don't know him personally, but I, I like his background.
Anything?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six zero, so Dale.
Okay, discussion items. Finance committee update?
Yes, finance committee met last week. Our finance staff is still working through all of the three percent refund for the employees that we receive from the state. We've got new software that's helping with that process, a little bit of a surprise. We also, that's going to have a slight negative effect on our budget because of the employment taxes that will have to be paid by the district, but the staff is working through all of that. Change in tax law will negatively affect us a little bit in terms of our bonds. Taxing temp bonds with this tax law are less favorable. As a result, we'll end up with slightly higher interest rates on these, but our financial advisors are advising us as to what to do with that. Anything else on that?
Or policy committee update?
The policy committee met yesterday. We are finally through the initial review of the whole policy set, so that is out to Niola to combine all our changes and bring us back an updated version that will review the, we did go through some legal updates, and the social, new social media policy is supposed to be delivered sometime soon, so you'll probably see that one highlighted. And we are meeting again on March fifth.
Have a recommended motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of January twenty-third, 2018. B, approval of the board retreat meeting minutes of January thirtieth, 2018. C, approval of the board finance committee meeting minutes of February fifth, 2018. D, approval of payment of general fund accounts payable of February thirteenth, 2018, in the amount of $1,158,091.40. E, approval of payment of bond fund accounts payable of February thirteenth, 2018, in the amount of $24,700.70. F, receive and file February curriculum, finance, and human resource report. G, approval of the following field trips as submitted by Superintendent Grayden. Women's soccer, women's soccer spring break trip to Destin, Florida on March twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth, 2018. FFA State Awards and Leadership Conference to East Lansing on March seventh through ninth, 2018. DECA State Competition to Detroit, Michigan on March ninth through eleventh, 2018. HOSA Leadership Conference to Grand Rapids, Michigan on March twenty-second through twenty-third, 2018. And H, approval of early graduation requests as submitted by Superintendent Grayden.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six zero.
Items scheduled for the next agenda?
We will have a technology report, so Troy, which one will be back?
Okay, and this is the last opportunity for public comment. Next Board of Education meeting will be held on February twenty-seventh, 2018 at six thirty PM at the Liberty School Media Center. We have a recommended motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of February thirteenth, 2018 at seven thirty-eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.